Everybody, I'd like to welcome everyone to the special City Council meeting of November 16th, In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council in according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Just a reminder that roll call votes will only be necessary if a specific matter requires one or a member of the council participates remotely, so we will be using roll call votes tonight. We have a non-discrimination statement opener for City Council meetings. It reads as follows. It's a finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, national origin, marital status, race, religion, sex or sexual orientation. I'd like to begin by announcing the names of City Councilors. On Zoom tonight, we have Counselor Tracy O'Neill, who is Ward Two City Counselor, and we have Jamie O'Hara. Yes. And Jamie O'Hara is our at-large City Counselor. Here in the room, we have Scott Memmard, who is Ward One City Counselor. We have Jeff Worthley, who is at-large. We have Jason Groh, who is at-large. We have Sean Nolan, who is Ward Five, and our Vice President. And we have Frank Margiotta, who is Ward Three, and our City Clerk, Joanne Sinos. And my name's Val Gilman. I'm Ward Four City Counselor and also the President. We have some members of staff here tonight. In the room, we have Jill Cahill, our C A O, over in the corner, and we have our Mayor, Greg Berger. We have three members at the Assessors Department, which is really important for tonight's meeting. Welcome to Gary Johnston, Tim Sanborn, and Nancy Pappas. Thank you for being here. We also have the Head of the Chamber of Commerce, Steve Buckley. Welcome, and Ruth Pino. So, welcome here. I think, let me just look online to see if anyone else is here. We have Kenny Coster online, and he is our auditor. And we have John Dunn, who is a guest. We have Pam Toby, who is our Director of Constituents and Communication Services. We have Melissa Gillis, who is our Administrative Assistant to the Mayor's Office. And that is it. Oh, Connor McQuarco. Welcome, Connor. He's online. He works as Assistant CFO to John Dunn. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, it's the First Order of Business.
Is the flag slew in moment of silence?
Tonight will be Frank Margiotta. We'll leave that. Thank you, Frank.
Public hearing 2023-053, Tax Classification in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five, and Gloucester Code of Orders, Chapter Two, Section Two-26, to determine the percentage of the local tax levy for the fiscal year 2024 to be borne by each class of real and personal property.
I would like to open the public hearing and ask that the Assessors Office or Mayor Berger would kick off the public hearing. Welcome, Mayor.
Welcome. Thank you, Councilors. Good to be here in person with you guys once again. I guess kind of for the first time since I've been mayor, so you look great. So, tonight, we're here to present my recommendation for the tax classification split, and we are once again recommending 1.03. Our team from the Assessors Office, Gary Johnston, Tim Good, and Nancy Pappas will lead you through it. I see a lot of binders over there, lots of information, and they can answer any questions you have. And with that, I'll hand it over.
Yes. Pam, I mistakenly called you Tim Sanborn. It's Tim Good. Sorry about that.
Nancy Pappas, Principal Assessor. The fiscal '24 assessed values and new growth were approved by the Department of Revenue on October 23rd. This allows us to move forward with the tax classification process. There are four options to consider, none of which change the total tax levy, because there are no parcels classified as open space, and the mayor has not chosen to adopt either the residential exemption or the small commercial exemption. The focus is on determining whether or not to shift a portion of the tax levy from one class of property to another. To do so, a residential factor must be adopted, and this factor determines the share of the tax levy that each class of property will bear. On page four of the packet, it shows the total value and percentage of each class. This year, the residential class makes up a total of 91.74% of the total value, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts are 8.26%. The taxable value of the city increased close to 13% from fiscal '23, and based on the sales analysis, the residential class as a whole increased just over 12.5%. Market adjustments to the single-family class as a whole were a little over 14%. The condominium class, 13%. Two families, three families, and apartments as a class are a little over 5.5%. The commercial class as a whole saw increases of a little over 5%, and market adjustments to the industrial class as a whole were close to 6%. So, overall, more significant increases in terms of market adjustments on the residential class side. Page five shows the parcel counts and assessed values of each class from 2011 to the present. Page six shows historic shift factors adopted over the years, and it's the underlying residential factor associated with the shift that is voted on. Page seven is the calculation of the maximum allowable levy. It starts with the levy limit from fiscal year '23. It's reduced slightly by amended new growth. Added to that is the Proposition Two and a Half increase and fiscal '24 new growth. That results in the fiscal '24 levy limit, and to that, the debt exclusions are added, which results in the fiscal '24 maximum allowable levy. That number divided by the total value of all parcels results in a tax rate at a factor of one this year of 9.76. Factor of one results in all properties being taxed at the same rate. Any factor other than one would shift a portion of the levy to another class. Page eight shows the approximate tax rates that result from the various shifts to the C I P class, and the maximum shift allowed by the state is 1.5. Page nine is a comparison of levies by class at various shift factors. The tax rates are approximate and rounded so as not to exceed the maximum allowable levy. And the far right-hand column shows the difference in the levy that each class of property would bring in after the shift. Page 10 shows change in tax dollars for properties valued at different levels at various shifts. It shows the savings to the residential parcels and the increase in tax dollars for the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. This year, the average single-family home is valued at $918,440. The median single-family home is $660,500. So, in the table, just choosing in between those, the property valued at $750,000 at the shift of 1.03 would save the residential taxpayer $22.50, while the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayer would pay an additional $217.50. At the bottom of the page, the maximum shift allowed of 1.5 is illustrated, and in that case, the residential taxpayer would see a savings of $330, while the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayer would pay an additional $3,660. And that's annually in terms of tax dollars. The remainder of the packet explains the open space discount, the residential exemption, and the small commercial exemptions, which are not viable options this year. If you have any questions, we are here, and we'll do our best to answer them for you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Stephen Buckley. I'm a resident of Six Puerto Drive in Gloucester. My role in representing tonight is I am the CEO of the Greater Cape Town Chamber of Commerce at 24 Harbor Loop. I feel like I have a unique perspective because I am a taxpaying resident as well as being the representative of the chamber and also operating a small business. So, listening to businesses every day, understanding their challenges, and just to put into perspective of the business climate and who these businesses are, 95% of our businesses, when we did a recent survey, were essentially 15 or less employees. So, our business community is made up mainly of small businesses, hair salons, auto body shops, retail stores, restaurants, and so on. So, looking at when we talk about the business community, they're mainly small businesses, and a lot of them are struggling right now, and I will talk about that. As you know, we are the largest business organization on the North Shore, and we advocate for parity in terms of the C I P rates, and we are obviously in support of the budgetary recommendations. Considering the different evaluations, obviously, with the C I P tax share and revenue has been on a downward slide for the past nine years, and it really had a historic low of 8.26, and that's almost 50% less than it was 30 years ago. And to add context to that, it should be noted that the commercial and the industrial properties account for only 5% of the total parcels. So, really understand that we are already seeing the burden, disproportionate burden of the 1.03 classification, that we are already experiencing a higher burden than residential owners. I would also like to point out that our businesses do contribute in terms of other ways and taxes. At our recent presentation in our summer season review, the City of Gloucester, specifically our local options room tax generated 1.6 million, and our restaurants contributed another 1 million in taxes in terms of revenue for the city. So, it's really important to note that they are contributing in other ways. Most Massachusetts communities do not have a higher tax, business tax rate, including our neighbors in Essex, Manchester, Rockport, Ipswich, and Newburyport. And it's also important to point out that some of the communities that do, such as Beverly, Peabody, and Salem, have a significantly higher base, business base and a larger business base, as I pointed out earlier. Many of the small businesses, it's just talking to everyone, they're struggling. And running a small business myself, every expense, every dollar matters, you really need to know. So, when these are your neighbors, these are your friends, every penny is accounted for right now, and within some of the things that I'm going to talk about, it really is looking at all those expenses and how businesses are struggling on a day-to-day basis. So, I did review, and I won't go through everything, but I did review really the considerations as outlined by the Mass Department of Revenue, some of the questions, and considering the percentage, as I pointed out, 95% versus 5% of the parcels, looking at the, basically, are these businesses required any extraordinary services? Most of them are small businesses and do not. And in my opinion, it will adversely affect any increases. And as it was pointed out, at a 1.5 classification, you're talking basically, what was it, $3,600? That would be devastating to a small business. So, we can basically debate many of the parity, but I just think really looking at on a much smaller level, we have to look at how this affects the business, what businesses are faced with challenge in terms of inflation, in terms of the labor shortage, unprecedented labor shortages. We're surrounded by water. We're down the line. Businesses are doing everything they can. They're reducing hours. Sadly, businesses are closing. Minor expenses have become major, so we really have to consider that when we talk about the business community and thinking about the business community. So, as you consider this important factor impacting the future of our, this incredible region and our incredible business communities, we have to also consider the challenges they face and what our businesses mean to our community. So, we are obviously in full support of the budget and finance recommendation to leave the shift unchanged, as well as Mayor Berger's recommendation, and ask that you consider that when you look at this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for all you do for the chamber. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to come up and speak in favor of this tax classification?
My name is Ruth Pino, and I live at 82 Real Street. And as a Realtor, I'm self-employed, and therefore I own a small business. My employer, he has real estate taxes on top of rent. But I talked to a small business person today who employs 65 people, but for all the same things that Steve said, she's very concerned about paying base rent, real estate taxes on top of it, full about. And I don't know how much you understand about how the personal property tax works. I'm not always clear on it either, but some businesses pay all personal property tax on top of real estate taxes on top of the rent. So, it's really important to think about those things. And the higher differential in taxes doesn't necessarily discourage businesses from being here, but think about it. Think about those numbers and how scary that is. There's only 800 properties that are listed as commercial here, under 800. Why? Like, put your creative thinking caps on in this comprehensive plan work over the next few years to just understand how much you have to do or should be doing to attract businesses and help businesses as much as you can stay employed. Small businesses are the first place nonprofits go to, the Little League teams go to, the high school goes to, the high school teams go to. So, just think about how important small business and business in general is to Gloucester. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Are there any communications, Madam Clerk? No communications received. Councilors, now it's our opportunity to ask questions. So, as we typically do, I'd like to start off in roll call vote and allow each person three minutes, I think, and then if we have to do another round, we will. So, first up is Counselor Margiotta.
Going over the packet and listening to the BNEF meeting the other day, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Memmard.
Counselor Margiotta, I have no questions at this time. We've gone through it thoroughly at the Budget and Finance Committee.
Counselor Nolan.
I have no questions at this time. I would like to point out that Ruth is correct, that as a business person, we do pay taxes on all business equipment, which is separate from real estate and taxes for property. So, there is added value to what we do have to pay as being in the business.
Counselor O'Neill.
Thank you. I actually had a one-on-one training with Nancy yesterday, so thank you, Nancy Pappas, and I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Counselor O'Hara's on the call.
Oh. I'm sorry. Yeah, I skipped. Counselor O'Hara, go ahead. You're, I jumped over you. I'm sorry. You have the floor.
Sure. Thank you. I'd like to ask Steve Buckley a few questions, if I could, please.
Steve, would you mind coming up? Pressure's on. Counselor O'Hara is going to ask you some questions. Go ahead. You have the floor, Counselor.
Hi, Steve. Thank you for being here tonight. Truly appreciate it. As you mentioned, you're a small business owner and obviously CEO of the Chamber. As far as small businesses, you mentioned employee issue. What have you, what have you found? If you could expand on that?
Businesses, in order to just stay open, obviously, to attract talent, they have to get more creative. They obviously have to raise wages significantly. My background is in healthcare, 25 years, paying agency staff, what I used to call premium dollars, paying agency travel, you're paying often double the rate. Overtime, staff working 80 hours a week, so you're paying 40 hours a week of time and a half. Pickup bonuses, getting creative with ways to recruit, sign-on bonuses. So, that those expenses that you incur, the labor costs almost become prohibitive, and it's increasingly, and having run a large business in Gloucester, trying to recruit talent even pre-pandemic was difficult, and this has exacerbated it probably tenfold. So, that's what really comes down to the bottom line, any expenses, and that's assuming you have the labor.
Sure. Thank you. And what does that do to the profitability of a business?
Obviously, it spirals, it becomes exponentially, I guess, factorial. It's the more you have to pay your staff, obviously, the obvious is it cuts into the bottom line. It cuts into what some of the unforeseen costs is, and we're seeing it every day. Businesses are cutting their hours. They're only open on so many days. Literally, I used the example two weeks ago, I went to three different coffee shops to get my coffee because businesses were either closed or shifted hours, so that obviously that's, those are days now that they cannot generate revenue. So, it truly impacts businesses in direct and indirect ways.
Thank you for that. And how does this impact the actual owners of these small businesses? As far as, what do you, what do you see a small business owner, is he or she, you know, what is actual small business owner, what's their day comprised of? Are they golfing, out on the boat, at the beach? What do you see a small business owner doing on a typical day?
Small business owner on a typical day, which is often six or seven days a week, is putting in 80, 100, 110 hours a week. We have people, they can't come to meetings because their shift manager called out, this one quit. So, they're putting in exorbitant amount of hours, their time, effort, energy. You're seeing burnout, you're seeing businesses shutter, established businesses, businesses that were successful. So, that small owner, they have to count every dollar, the cut has to come from somewhere, so they're trying to reduce other expenses, and I can speak from my own experience, but more importantly, talking to membership. It's amazing now what we're seeing, an expense that people wouldn't have thought even a year ago, but two years ago, $100 matters to them. So, when we talk about these numbers, they're real, that $300 or the $250 that was presented, that's real, that's an expense that is gone somewhere else. So, that's what it means to the small business owner.
Terrific, Steve. Hey, I truly appreciate you answering these questions. Counselor Gilman, I have questions for Ruth Pino. I can wait for the next round, if you'd like.
Okay, that would be great, Counselor. We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Gilman, and I do have a question. And I was wondering if I could ask a question of Nancy Pappas, and what I'm going to ask Joanne to do is put up on the screen a screen share of the calculation of the maximum allowable levy and ask if you would go through that, because I think that that's an important document for the public to understand, and those members of the public that weren't at BNEF, particularly emphasizing the Prop Two and a Half increase, how that fits into the formula, as well as new growth for both residential and C I P and the debt as well. So, if you wouldn't mind going through that, that would be appreciated, Nancy. Thank you.
There you go, Joanne. Page seven. So, it is on page seven of the packet, and Proposition Two and a Half basically puts some parameters in place, and a restriction of Proposition Two and a Half is the levy limit. So, it always starts with the levy limit from the previous year, and if the city chooses not to levy all the way up to that limit, that's still the start point in any given year. So, it starts with the levy limit from the previous year. Amended new growth is basically if we've done an abatement on something where we actually received new growth from that property and we lowered the value, this is basically detracting from that. New growth in general is basically new construction. It can be condominium conversions, new parcels that were created from lot splits. Sometimes it's properties that were exempt and are now taxable. And the reason this formula allows you to bring in new growth as well is because the theory is that new growth, in terms of if you look at it like an apartment complex or something of that nature, is going to result in the need for increased city services. So, the Proposition Two and a Half is basically just multiplying from the levy limit from the prior year, and that's allowable each and every year. So, if properties were completely stable and there was no changes in value, people would pay a little more each year because of Proposition Two and a Half and the fact that you can bring in that 2.5% more of the levy each year. The new growth is carrying itself more or less, those properties are there and have assessed value, so they're going to pay based on their value and the tax rate, but that will become subject to the 2.5% increase next year. The debt exclusions are the annual debt payments for, in our case, it's the C S O, water debt exclusion, and for those two, it's a shift. So, basically, you can't collect it in both places. If you're going to collect it on the tax levy, which we are, you have to reduce the water and sewer rates the same amount. So, this is basically shifted over to here, and the newer debt exclusion that we have is the new school, East Veteran School. And last year was the first year that this came into play. So, the debt exclusions are something over and above the levy limit that you're allowed to bring in. If there were an override that was voted, that would be something in addition to the levy limit as well, and it would become part of the levy limit base. With the debt exclusions, they're temporary in terms of until the debt gets paid off, then they are retired. They don't become part of the levy limit base, but they will remain in effect in this calculation until the debt is paid, like Paul's Hill is now gone, but that took some time. They add to the tax rate basically because we were allowed to bring in that extra debt payment each year, and it's about 55 cents in the case of all three of these right now for this year that it adds. And then to come up with the factor of one, the tax rate, you're basically taking what that total amount we can raise and dividing the value of all parcels. So, as the value of parcels go up in an increasing market like we've seen, the tax rate comes down. So, that's the leveling mechanism. Values going up, tax rate down. If values were going the other way, you would see the tax rate start to come up.
That's very helpful. Thank you so much. I think I ask that all the time, but it's a good reminder of how it all works. a good reminder of how it all works. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I am. Next up is, we will go around again.
I'd like a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Grow.
And I'd like to claim everybody else's time for this. Don't hit that button yet, John. Thank you. You might as well stay there. Nancy, I had a couple of questions. Can you speak to the change in the ratio of residential versus CIP property taxes, values, and that impact on the amount of taxes that are raised by each class?
Yes.
Over the last few years?
So basically, what we've seen, because the residential market is a very emotional purchase, it's volatile, there's extremely limited supply and high demand in places like we live, where there's a lot of amenities that people value, whether it's beaches, ocean. I mean, we have a really strong cultural community and a diverse population, I think, which is attractive to people. So as those residential values increase, they typically increase at a faster rate than, say, commercial or industrial, which is a more stable type of purchase. It's based on investor expectations. It's a financial decision. It's less volatile. And in a decreasing market, the same would hold true. The residential would probably decrease at a faster rate than the, the commercial would still remain relatively stable. So as the residential class, if you look at page five, for instance, you can see how the value started increasing in fiscal 14 roughly, and you see how it's starting to increase in terms of its percentage of the total. I think most of that, some of it is growth because there's more residential growth in this community as well. But the bulk of that really is because of the change in the values. And that's been pretty much for the last 10 years.
And just, just a note for folks that can't see this, in 2014, the ratio of residential to commercial industrial personal property was 88.8% to 11.2%. And now it's 91.74% and 8.26%. So it's changed about four percentage points, roughly speaking, right, over the course of that time, which means that we're raising more on the residential side than we were correspondingly on the, on the commercial industrial.
At a factor of one, they're going to bring in a higher percentage of the levy, yes.
Can, you touched on this, I think, before, but can you explain a little bit about the small, small commercial exemption and the residential exemption and why we don't do it and why we would want to do it if, if we couldn't, how?
Sure. That's okay.
There's big audience here that needs to get this information here.
So the residential exemption is actually a shift within the residential class. So with the residential exemption, that class, the residential class as a whole, still has to bring in what it would have brought in in terms of levy prior to adopting the exemption. What the exemption does is it benefits a certain population of that residential class. So if you are a taxpayer that owns and occupies your home, you're a resident, you would be eligible for the exemption. Properties that would not be eligible would be vacant land, summer homes where they're not full-time residents, non-owner occupied apartment buildings most likely. And you can do an exemption of anywhere up to 35%. So we have an illustration in the packet that's 10%. So it looks at basically the average assessed value. And if the exemption is 10%, that's multiplied by that value. And that becomes the exemption that qualifying taxpayers will receive, and it's a reduction in their value. So what happens is because the class still has to bring in what it would have brought in before the exemption, the tax rate winds up being increased. So residential class would then have a higher tax rate, but some properties would have a lower value because they're going to have that deduction of the exempted amount. And in the example that we have for 10%, it's like a $75,000 reduction in value. And properties that are lower in value see more significant savings. Obviously, the properties at that same value range that don't get the exemption are going to pay more because they're paying the higher tax rate and don't benefit from the exemption. But you will get to a point where it's break even. So this year, it's basically $1,001,530, if you want to be exact. And that taxpayer, even if they qualify for the exemption, they're going to pay the same amount as they would have had we not adopted the exemption, as with the exemption with the higher tax rate. And any taxpayers above that figure, 1.2 million, say, they are residents, they qualify for the exemption, but they will actually pay more in taxes because of the higher tax rate. So it benefits moderately priced properties. And part of that is picked up by the higher valued homes, vacant lands, other people that are seasonal residents, say, and they don't occupy, and non-owner occupied homes in general, which are sometimes apartments.
And getting, finishing up, is that, is there a reason that we don't pursue that a little bit more aggressively and adopt it? What's the process for adopting it?
Adopting it would be at the recommendation of the mayor. There are just a lot of factors that go into thinking about whether this is something you want to do. Because whenever you're helping somebody, it's at the expense of someone else, more or less, when you're looking at a class at a whole, as a whole. It could have an effect in terms of rents if you wind up seeing apartment buildings, having to pay more, more taxes. So there are pros and cons to it. And it's not something that the mayor has decided to adopt at this time.
Do I have time for another question? I mean, you're supposed to be three minutes of asking questions.
Right.
So I want to get back to the differential in terms of what, what, what we, what we're paying and what we think, what we think we're paying. And, you know, friends don't let friends do PowerPoint or Excel spreadsheets, but I do both. Looking at the numbers in the last five years, I've noticed, and I had Kenny take a look at these, and he confirmed, and Tim also confirmed, that the actual reality is, is that the commercial industrial property tax on average has gone down every year for the last few years, that they're paying less as an average. I mean, blunt force average as a class number of parcels. To the tune, if you add it all up over the course of five years, the average is about $1,000, $1,095 less than they were paying in 2019. So we're seeing a, an impact from the residential rise, a pretty dramatic raise, because that same, that same number looks an increase of, on a, on a single-family house of about $1,500 over the course of that same period of time. So if we were to moderate that shift a little bit and even out that, that number so that we're paying roughly the same percentage increase across the board, would, would that be a fair way of, of looking at how we, how we look at these taxes? I guess what I'm saying is that should the residential component of the city be subsidizing the commercial industrial part of the equation?
A lot of it is philosophy. And I think the thing that you have to remember when you look at this community is the 90-10 split. So I understand what you're saying. If you want to try to mitigate what's happening in the real estate market and shift more to the commercial industrial, that is a way of potentially doing what you are describing. I didn't look at your second set of numbers, but I trust that they're, they're accurate. But what you have to remember, and really only that you can see on page 10, is that it's very difficult with the 90-10 split to provide significant relief to the residential taxpayer, even with shifting, because the savings that they see is spread over that whole class, which is much larger than the commercial industrial and personal property. So if you're looking at a 1.10, let's just say, because we have that illustration on that page, you're still only going to save the $750,000 taxpayer $67.50 for the year for a residential. The commercial, industrial, and personal property at that same rate would pay an additional 735.
But the corresponding change in their value drove the amount of taxes that they paid down?
The class as a whole, yes. And I, I hear what you're saying, because they're not rising at the same percentage as most of the residential is. You know, this year, we have apartments, two families, and three families are kind of in a similar range as, as what the commercial and industrial saw for market increases. That's not always very common, but last year, they saw a really significant increase. So this year, they're a little bit on the lower side. But the average commercial is definitely on the lower side of, of increases in terms of market adjustments. And that will result in, you know, them bringing up less in terms of the total levy.
As always, you guys are great for information. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy. We're going to do another round. So next up is Frank Maggiota. Do you have anything else to add? Any questions?
No.
And now we have Counsel Memard.
Nothing further, no.
Counsel Nolan.
I do have another question for Steve Buckley. Thank you, Steve. So this will be a small question. And in your experience with the Chamber of Commerce and with pre-COVID and COVID and recovery, we all notice, like you had said before, that coffee shops and other small shops have times that they're not open, they're looking for workforce, and they're having a hard time getting by. In your opinion, do you think that it's a fair assessment to think about going up on this rate? Or do you believe it should stay the same? And because of the values that we heard from Jason is a valid point, the business property hasn't gone up in value, but the households have. But business-wise, I have to look at you for your experience with the Cape Town Chamber. How do the businesses feel right now, still after COVID? Or not, I don't want to say after COVID, but dealing with what the situation is with help and the ability to maintain their business hours and draw in money for the time that they can't be open versus not. Do you think that raising the rates at this time would be a good decision or a bad decision?
In my opinion, from listening to, and talking with countless businesses, it would not be a good decision because the impact, as I said earlier, I'm a property owner. I see, you know, what $67 worth of savings versus $700 on us, on a business. What that actually means is you're cutting things. When you're looking and being somebody who both listens to the businesses, when you, it actually means something is giving. And when we see businesses that are literally hanging on by their fingernails, and that last expense, that one expense too many, they, they don't have room, they're, they're already cutting, they're looking at every little office supply, every little way that they can cut. And it would, it, the opinion of everyone that I've talked to is any little hit, as I had mentioned earlier, that $100, people have said, I can't do it. I can't even sponsor. I can't afford that fee. So 500, 700, 1,000, 5,000 is, can be devastating to a small business. So I would be opposed to an increase, in my opinion.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Next up for second round is Counsel O'Hara.
Yes, Steve, don't sit down. Oh, he sat down. Can I ask you again? I apologize. I want to ask Steve some more questions.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Steve. Steve, can you explain what, as a, you know, the chamber and the small business, what's it like being a business owner? And particularly a business owner who has employees? What's it like on a given day for, for a business owner? What is that business owner, what's he or she have to look forward to in, in his, his or her pursuit to, to keep, keep their doors open and keep business flowing?
Well, right now, the, many of the business owners, particularly the small, I wouldn't even say just the small business owners, because I've been, I've run 200-plus employee and not too long ago, you're not just the employer, you're the employee. You don't have a lot to look forward to now. People are stressed, they're burned out, they're leaving their occupations. I could recite statistics all night in terms of the exodus from certain industries. And we see it, we see non-renewals because people are saying, I'm going out of business, I can't do it anymore, retiring. We know these businesses. We, we, we could name these businesses. So those owners, they've, they've, they've had enough. They, maybe they retired, they've, they've said, I've sold the business. The day is, is, is a 14, 16, 18-hour day, and it's not fun for them right now. And any additional stresses on an already overly stressed and strained industry is, is pretty devastating. So it's a tough day.
Sure. Thanks. You put the help wanted sign out, looking for help. What can a business owner expect to see flowing into their door?
It's, let's make a deal. If you can get people in the door to apply, it's, it's an employee's market, and that's great for the labor market, and that's a wonderful thing. But it also, as an employer, you, to attract talent, particularly up here, it's a limited pool. As I said earlier, you're looking at, you're surrounded by water on three sides. People look at us as, as we are literally, you know, on the end of the earth. So trying to attract talent up here, it is incredibly difficult. And the only way to do that, I mean, there are other strategies. We just did a great presentation on labor recruitment and some innovative strategies. But at the end of the day, it's still money talks, and you have to be able to support, financially support those employees. And when we're adding additional expenses, that only cuts into it more.
Sure. Thanks. Can you name any businesses in, in Gloucester that have gone out of business in 2023?
I could tell you, for instance, you know, one of my favorites, Willow Rest, you know, I just can't find help. Great business, thriving business, would go there routinely with probably once a week. I look at that as a business that says, you know, everyone probably in this room is, these are people we know. You know, Gloucester Healthcare, I know you're getting into 2022, 23. So that's one less place for people to have choice. There's businesses that have just said, I've retired, but that, you know, Willow Rest to me was, I mean, that was one of my favorite spots. And they, these are real people that had successful businesses that you frequent, and now there's, they're vacant because they couldn't find help. And that's the, the expense, and that's the consequence. It's a, it's a, it's a critical time right now. And I, I, obviously, we do, we don't, any more expenses or, and I get it, I'm a taxpayer, I get the tax bill, just like everyone else. So as a resident, so I understand how that impacts. But, you know, the difference between $25 or $30 versus a business that is, is hanging on by their fingernails is, is really much more significant and impactful.
Thank you, Steve. Counselor Gilman, would you like me to ask questions of, of Ruth Pino now? Wait for the next round?
Yeah, I think we're getting towards the end. So I think you can continue, Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. Hello, Ruth. Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it. From your perspective, as, as you're, you're in the, in the business, you've, you've obviously been in Gloucester a long time. How do you see this on both sides of the fence, the businesses and the residential? We obviously talk about affordable housing. How's this? This is a double-edged sword. Do you see that as being that for landlords and, and businesses for that perspective? What do you, what are your thoughts on that?
So my advocacy for small business has to do with the fact that I live here. And do we want a community that doesn't have restaurants and small businesses for us to enjoy? And that's what it really comes down to. And while I appreciate Governor Counselor Gro's assessment and his idea, it's the wrong way to look at it. We need business. Like just because their assessments have gone down, did you think about what is up with that? Their assessments went down for a reason, and it's not good. So to Steve's points about the difficulty in, in finding employees is a, is a really big package of discuss, discussion and conversation. And I could be here for two hours about that. And small business is the life of a community. It's where our kids start to work. My kids worked at Charlie's place when they were in high school. We would drive them to work, pick them up. My grand girls worked at Lotso Land. You walk in some restaurants, and they're not all Gloucester people. And what does that tell you? That we have a thriving restaurant community here. We want people to come and visit and, and pay attention to those restaurants. But the way that tenants work in a commercial property is a big deal, how you understand that. So they pay rent. Most of the time, it's a triple net. So they pay real estate taxes on top of the rent, and they pay personal property tax on their equipment. So talking about their assessments going down is like you say to yourself, what happened? Why does that happen? There's a reason why those things happen. that happen? There's a reason why those things happen. But I care about this subject because I live here. And I care about my, my, my friends and family, and my, my grandgirls worked when they were in high school, and they have wonderful jobs now. One of them doesn't live here anymore. So that's really a big part of how I am so passionate about this. I was in, I was a past president of the Chamber of Commerce and became really involved and understood this subject so much more then than now. And I continue to be passionate about it, to support it. I appreciate the mayor keeping it the way it is, and I appreciate you doing the same. And Steve knocked it out of park for you, having you understand the impact of expenses of any kind on a small business. I hope that answers your question.
It, it does. Just, I know, I asked a question of Steve, but just, just from your perspective, again, what is a, a basic business owner? What does his or her day look like?
So right now, it's worrying about, can I have the, can I have the building cleaned once a week like I used to? And I'm seeing that cutting back. So there's small business right there, cleaning company, who comes in and dumps the trash, cleans the bathrooms, vacuums, just takes care of cleanliness. So has to cut back on that because of the reduction in business of, of some sort, whatever the business is. So you, so it's, it's a, it's a series of complications that the economy, you know, we think about the economy as a big picture again, but all inside of that are other issues that are really difficult to all put into black and white and have you understand the impact of this subject is on our community. And so when you, when we're down below 9%, 800 physical properties, that's scary. When you look at the bigger communities further down 128. And I'm not saying we need to be that. We need to support small business and the businesses that we have here and jobs. It's good paying jobs are the reason why people can stay. And without small business and any kind of business, where are the jobs?
A quick question. Where, as far as your, your, you're talking to small businesses and your thoughts, where should this tax classification be?
Well, of course, I would always advocate for it to be the same. But I, but I'm happy with it, the status quo of one, of 1.3. So
And, and what are you hearing, small businesses? What are they advocating?
Well, I think they prefer that it wasn't different. I think they need to feel supported by the community as a whole, not just the government, but people who live here to understand that to have them here is really important to our lifestyle. And to a whole lot of reasons. I mean, I'm repeating myself, but for our kids and grandkids to be able to have jobs when they're in high school, to earn money as however they can to go to college, or just to start a life and hopefully stay here.
Sure. I appreciate your time, Ruth. And Steve, thank you as well. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. Next up is Counsel O'Neill. Do you want a second turn at questions, Counselor?
No, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you. I know some of the answers to these questions, but I think it's good to get it on the record. The first question is for Ms. Pappas, if I could. If I'm a business owner, I don't live in Gloucester, but I own a property in Gloucester. I pay taxes to the city of Gloucester. What percentage of those taxes goes to remove my trash?
You might want my kale. I believe the businesses pay for their own trash removal.
So my taxes that go to the city, 0% of that goes to pay for my trash?
As far as I know, that's correct.
I live out of town. I own a business in Gloucester. I have kids in my, in my home district, PBD, who say, I own a business in Gloucester. What percentage of the taxes I pay to the city of Gloucester go to educate my students, my kids, I'm sorry?
Not your personal children, but the children of this community, yes.
So I don't, I'm not adding to the burden to the city if I don't, I'm not adding kids to the schools, and I'm not adding trash to the waste stream because I'm paying for it myself if I'm a business owner. Right?
Definitely not the trash. I guess it would depend on the, the person and the business and who they employ on the other question.
Okay, thank you. My question is to either Steve or Ruth. I'll ask the question, then you guys decide which, which one of you, my phone keeps turning on, I'm sorry. You guys decide which one of you makes most sense to answer. If I'm a Gloucester business owner and my customers are Gloucester residents, and I have an increase in my taxes, and I decide to pass that cost on to my customers, who pays that differential?
Obviously, the, the passer would go and often does, you know, to the, the increasing costs. So it's, with the inflation that I touched upon earlier that we're dealing with, it does get passed through because it has to. It's a, businesses are just, just clinging.
The cup of coffee you said you're trying to get, you went to three different places, it's going to cost a little bit more if we raise taxes on businesses, it's going to cost you as a resident more money?
Yes.
Okay. This sounds like simple economics. If I am a business owner and I employ Gloucester people, and I have to make some cuts, and that person owns a home in Gloucester, I have to cut an employee that doesn't have a job now, doesn't have income, and they've got to pay their residential taxes, have I made it easier for the resident or harder for the resident because I cut an employee?
Obviously, harder. And that's, and I think that also speaks to Ruth's point. And you know, it is, it's part of the economy, it's creating the jobs, and we need these businesses here. It's that simple.
Okay. So that makes a lot of sense to me. I appreciate it. One more question to go back to the assessor's office. When we talk about the growth in the residential tax assessments, are you counting new growth in that formula, too?
New growth is part of the calculation of the maximum allowable levy, yes, from all classes.
So if a property owner builds a mansion on the back shore, there's a bunch of them right now tucked in a little bit, and that value is added to the percentage of the growth in the levy, overall taxable amount, how is that hurtful to other residents?
It's not really hurtful to other residents because they are assessed for a certain amount, which includes that growth. Their entire value may not be completely growth, but they're basically carrying that value and paying on that tax dollar. The next year, it will be part of the 2.5%, though.
So it actually helps subsidize the rest of that residential tax rate?
Well, it's, it's increasing the residential class in terms of its percentage of the total value. So
If the business percentage has dropped, does that mean that the value of the property has dropped? Or does it mean as a percentage of the overall taxable property?
Not necessarily. And the trouble is when you start looking at individual properties, it gets very sticky. The class as a whole was going up for industrial and commercial. It's not to say that every property in those classes is seeing an increase or a decrease because there's always going to be properties that go either way, quite frankly. But basically, because it's increasing at a lower percentage, that percentage of the total value is what's decreasing. That's why they're 8.26 now, because residential is rising at a faster pace.
So the business asset, the property, has not grown in value as rapidly as the residential value has?
Correct.
So I can't imagine how it makes sense to tax them higher if their asset didn't grow at the same rate as the residential asset. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Counsel Gilman, I'm going to pass. And then we're back to Counsel Gro.
Nancy, don't go too far. We got to, we got to clear this up because it, I, I don't, I don't want to, the numbers that I'm looking at indicate that the commercial properties in the last five years have, as a class, over the five years, increased in value 28.63%. That's based on the numbers that you guys provided me, that, all of us. The industrial properties over that same five years have increased a total of 20.9%. So the value from 2019 to 2024 has changed. So there's not a year that any of those classes reduced in value. What has changed is the, is the ratio of the value to the residential, correct?
Correct.
In five of the, three of those five years, the tax rate, the, I'm sorry, the amount of taxes paid by that class has actually decreased. And over that same five years, commercial properties are paying 1.39% less than they were in 2019, and industrial are paying 7.32% less than, than, than they were in 2019 overall. And in residential, we've seen a 50, a single-family house, I'll stick to that because the, the residential's class is complicated to figure out. But we've seen an increase of 56.69% residential value over that five years. And we've seen a 20.14% increase in the amount of taxes that residents are paying for single-family houses. Is that, would you say that's roughly accurate?
Based on your numbers, I didn't review everything, especially in the second go around. But if residential values are rising at a faster pace, that class is paying more in tax dollars.
But every, every class has increased in value. There's no, there's
That's correct.
Value going on here at all. Okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear because it's not, it's not right to say that, that commercial values have gone down. They've gone down relative to residential values.
They have increased for market adjustments as a class, yes.
Thank you. That's good. I want to make sure that I don't have anything else to ask. And we can, just out of, just so we know for, for general, general knowledge, our general ratio over the last, what, 10, 12 years has been 90-10, right? We've seen that as a general
90-10 pretty much for as far back as I can remember. When values were decreasing, you saw the residential go a little bit, dip below the 90. We just haven't seen the decreasing values recently.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So I think we've finished the, the question portion of the public hearing. So I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report from Council Memard.
The Budget and Finance Committee, meeting on November 9th, made a recommendation on a motion by myself, Councilor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council adopt a residential classification factor of .9973 that equates to a commercial industrial, private CIP shift of 1.03 for the fiscal year 2024. And I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council Memard and seconded by Counselor Worthley. They're discussing
I would just make the comment that in my experience, in fact, over the last number of years, this is the first time that the Budget and Finance Committee has voted unanimously to leave the status quo be and has not advocated for the parity or equal status that we've advocated for in the past, along the lines of what Ruth and Steve described, basic fairness and trying to have everything the same. But in the interests of moving ahead and working with the, with the administration, Budget Finance Committee voted unanimously to just stay at 1.03 rather than advocating for 1.0 and dragging out a discussion about that.
Thank you, Counsel.
That's all right. I don't mind.
Okay, so let's begin going through the roll call order for discussion on the motion that's in front of us. I'm going to start with Counsel Maggiota. Why don't we do about two minutes? Is that okay?
I think, I think just keeping it as is, it will help, you know, everyone, you know, everyone is struggling. And based on small businesses, I think, you know, people are struggling with the cost of groceries and everything going up. And it's hard. Every, every penny counts, no matter which way you look at it, small businesses personally. So leaving us to us quote, it will help the community. And hopefully, we can, you know, work together and help small businesses grow in this town and, you know, get it a little bit higher than the 8%. Thank you.
Counsel Memard.
I will be supporting the, the recommendation of the subcommittee. I would, however, point out that a healthy Gloucester is a Gloucester that has local jobs on Cape Anne, so that we don't become a bedroom community where we enjoy the lovely views but have to go off the island and over the bridge. Steve, I like to refer to it as the beginning of the line, rather the end of the line. It all starts here. But local jobs build a strong local economy, and local businesses are what create local jobs. And I think that anything we, we do, it's, it's a minor point at this point in terms of the tax rate, but anything, anything we can do to encourage more businesses to locate and grow in Gloucester, supporting both existing local businesses and inviting new businesses, is a tremendous, unbelievably important benefit to this community. And I, as I said before, my concern is that, given the condition of this, of the, the commercial fishing industry in Gloucester and the regulation by the National, National Fishery Service and the government of the industry, at this point, Gloucester Harbor, which has been an economic engine for the community, for jobs and opportunities for decades and years, is now largely languishing. And there, there's unutilized real estate, the real estate values on Gloucester Harbor because they're limited by designated port area restrictions at state level. Speaking from personal experience, again, my, my family and group brought, bought the Cape On Ice property on Commercial Street, at 104 Commercial Street, 40 years ago, for about a million and a half dollars. Forty years later, when we were foreclosed on by our banks because we couldn't meet our needs based on the shrinking demand for ice, in spite of all of our efforts over the decades to diversify and expand and develop business off Cape Anne, the, the property is, is basically valued at the same. And when we sold it seven years ago, it was for a million, $950,000 versus the million and a half that we'd spent 40 years ago. So that, that is not an appreciation of value. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is Counsel Nolan.
I have not yet made my decision. I'd like to hear more discussion before I choose.
Counsel O'Hara. You are muted.
There we go. I apologize. I appreciate Steve Buckley and Ruth Pino answer my questions. I, I think it's, it's very clear that small businesses are, are having problems. I can speak from experience. I too am a small business owner, and my small business was absolutely crushed during COVID and still is. Hence the reason why Counsel Nolan knows this very well. Counsel Nolan took care of my fleet of trucks that were pretty much demolished by my employees at the time. I lost two, two vehicles. And I'm just a small business, lost two vehicles in less than 24 hours totaled. Replacement vehicle I purchased to replace one of the two vehicles I was totaled, was totaled three months after that. It's absolutely brutal. And the reason why I am, I had to change my format of, of operating. And I didn't, it, if, if I could live, if I could be enjoying the house that I purchased from my family right now on Lexington Ave, I'd much rather be there right now, but I can't make a living in, in, in Gloucester with employees. So my, my heart goes out to business owners. I, I think we, we really, we really need to look at this. Obviously, everyone, everyone, we just passed an election period. But the businesses are struggling. I mean, you, you, you know it. Counselor Nolan knows it. He and I talked, we talked about the, the United Auto Workers and their proposal, how this is going to, everything's impacting small businesses. And a small business that has an employee, that, that dollar, that employee more than likely is going to spend their income on Cape Anne. It's going to, it's, you know, we're just going to beat up that dollar that that person makes. But most of the, most of the residents of Gloucester, as, as most of us know, they, they hit the rotary and they go south in the morning because we don't have many businesses remaining. So I, I think we, 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 as a council, it's, it's difficult, but I think we really need to consider what, what, what we're doing for small businesses as, as a city, as a council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. I say I'm a small business owner, but when in fact, I say I'm a small business owner, but when in fact I am self-employed. I did have employees pre-COVID, but they haven't come back and my business has not come back from COVID either. I did a quick analyze, analogy of on page five of this report and from 2011 to 2024, we lost 46 commercial businesses. And from, just from 2019 to 2024, we lost 28. So it, we're losing businesses and I know why. It, it's, this is a real challenging time for me. As you know, I think everybody knows, I picked up a part-time job a couple, couple days a week to help compensate for the lack of business that's happened since COVID. And to use Steve Buckley's words, I'm hanging on by my fingernails. So I ask that the council consider small business when they're voting for this tax increase. I would prefer that it doesn't increase at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you. I will be supporting the recommendation that the Budget and Finance Committee presented and thank the mayor for suggesting that, recommending that we adopt that. I think that businesses and small businesses specifically are the lifeblood of our community. We talk about affordable housing and I think that we get caught up in numbers, but the numbers are, it's actually interesting. If we shift the burden to businesses, we might save $15 on a property tax, $20 here in a property tax, and we say that matters, but then we might lose a job. We might have a business that doesn't locate here that provides jobs and those jobs help people afford the houses that we have. So I think that there's a connectivity and, and a lot of these business owners are Gloucester residents. They care as well. They contribute to the community just like residents do and they're the first ones to hit up for donations, the first ones to make contributions. I think we need to really be thinking about the big picture here. We need to draw more businesses here. We need to probably expand an industrial park, Alpha Conlon Road or something to get more properties here so that 8% can be a higher number so we can have the businesses don't demand a lot from, from the city in terms of services contributing to our community more. So I'll be supporting this and hope that it's a unanimous vote and thank you.
I'm next. I'm going to be supporting the 1.03. I think it's been fully vetted. I've watched the BNF meetings. I've listened closely, read the packet very closely. Some of the numbers that are the ones that hit me hard when we look at on page 10 of the packet, if your house is $500,000 residential, you're going to save $15. And a business, a CIP, is going to increase 145. If you're 750, you save $22.50 and a business increases by 217. So the challenges that I see and spend a lot of time talking to a lot of our small businesses, particularly on Main Street of recent, some of our challenges, I think, that we need to think about, counselors, and we need to keep reminding the public, is that when businesses give, give certificates and, and goods to all the 501(c)(3)'s that are looking for it, let's make sure that we remind the people, asking for those two, to remind the people that are part of that 501(c)(3), to make sure that you're very clear to the people that are celebrating an event and doing fundraising, to make sure that you really do a lot to promote that business because it kind of goes both ways. The people that are really generous, let's, let's remind our friends to make sure that you go and, and you go in and really thank them for it and, and give them that business instead of going up the line. Similarly, sometimes if you're going in, instead of saying, I want a gift card, see if they have something that's not selling, that someone might love to see in a gift, you know, in a basket or something, or something that's not a hot item because that wouldn't be quite the burden. And then from a city council and from administration, we need to keep an eye on the prize and that is remind each other the importance of the city services that we're giving the businesses. And I think things like, you know, being sensitive to the times that the streets are closed because of business is really important and I think we've tried to improve that flexibly right now with administration trying to do that and then with the possible ordinance. So we're a little bit more clear with when we're going to be closing down streets because it's a hardship. So those are my thoughts on this. Overall, I'm going to be supporting the 1.03. It's a conundrum, but we love our small businesses and it hurts us when they're not able to survive. So let's, let's work hard as a council to think of ways that we can continue to really promote them. And I thank Ruth and Steve for being here to represent those businesses. So thank you. Next up is Council Grow.
All right. So I'm going to say some unpopular things here. First off, businesses by and large get the same services residents do. My brother lives in an apartment complex with an HOA and they pay for their own trash service. Okay. This, I'm saying, I'm looking at you, but I'm saying this out to everybody. I'm bringing it up because you, you said that you've made the comment. There are lots of people who do not get every service in the city, you know? Maybe you don't have kids that go to school, you still pay taxes and send kids to school. If you're an employer, you own a business, your employees may send their kids to school. They drive over the same roads, they have the same fire coverage, the same police coverage. So I, I, that's an argument that comes up routinely, but it, it's not really a very strong one in my view because none of us, none of us get all the services that a city offers, yet we all pay into the taxes. The next question I guess I would ask the council is why the 1.03? If we are so concerned about the impact on small businesses, why do we, why do we continue year after year, and we've done this now for six years, continue a 1.03 shift that has negligible impact on residents and does have an impact on small businesses and yet we say every dollar matters? Why aren't we going to 1.0? Why? I don't understand the rationale between if you're, if you're going to make a shift, why are you making the shift? And if the shift is to, to prevent small businesses from getting an impact, then we should be going to 1.0 on a regular basis. I don't personally agree with that. I think there's some condition, there's some things about business taxes that people forget. One, all the rent, all the property taxes, all the mortgage costs for a property, for business, commercial property, industrial property is tax deductible. Residents have a limit on the amount of tax deductions that they can take for, for state income tax and for property taxes. So there, any, anything over, certain $10,000 on, on a personal for, for a couple is taxed, whereas businesses get a full whack on the property tax deduction. So there are benefits on that side of the equation that, that, that aren't something that we talk about. I mean, ideally for, for the most health for our businesses would be to pay no taxes at all. I don't think, when you look at the fact that we are literally the lowest, other than Rockport, we are the lowest industrial, commercial, residential tax rate in the North Shore and yet we're not attracting businesses. So it's not the tax rate that's not drawing people here, it's, it's other issues. But I, I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the, the couple buck difference and the, the 50 cent difference in the tax rate. I think what we're doing is we're, we're, we're using that as a, as an excuse for the fact that we have other issues that we need to resolve in terms of affordability of housing. And we talk about housing affordability, we talk about lowering costs for people who live in these houses, which is reducing their tax burden. I've done a fair amount of work on, on the, on looking at these numbers and I am intrigued. I don't feel like we should be, you know, going up to 1.5 or 1.65 or whatever, but I, I do think that we need to be a little bit more thoughtful about looking at what the ratio of taxes are and where we're headed. And with that in mind, and for the sake of discussion, I would like to offer an amendment to raise the, the, the percentage change, thank you very much, the, the change to 1.11 and I, I will be happy to explain why I've come up with that number.
Okay. Kenny, Kenny, if you can, Ken Costa, if you're on the call, can you just be clear on exactly what we should be saying with this motion you would?
So it would be, it would be city council to adopt a residential tax classification factor of .9901 that equates to a CIP shift of 1.11 for fiscal year 2024. That would be the, the new residential tax classification factor.
Okay. So let me just be clear. The city council adopt a residential tax classification factor of .9901 that equates to a CIP shift of 1.11 for fiscal year 2024. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's the amendment made by Council Grow. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Council Nolan. A discussion on the amendment, Council Grow.
On the amendment, and if I could, I'm going to share my screen.
Good.
Yeah, it should be, I just got to get to the right window. You, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. Okay. All right. I'm going to try to go through this quickly because it's, it's, it's a lot of little numbers and, but basically what I've done is.
Point of order.
State your point, Council Worthley, on process.
Yeah, so I, I respect that you put this together, but if this were a document that was provided by the treasurer's office, assessor's office, auditor's office, I think we could say, and I'm sure your numbers are good, but I don't, if I put a spreadsheet together, I would make a mistake. I don't want to.
Well, that's fine, but this has nothing to do with, with, I'm allowed to present the evidence as I, as I see it and this is all numbers based on the assessor's office that were given to us in the packet.
Okay, so this is your spreadsheet?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay. Fine.
Council Grow, could you just zoom in a little bit? Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to zoom in over here just a little bit.
So continue.
Thank you. Too many things on my screen here. I'm going to get rid of this. There we go. Too much. All right. So this, this spreadsheet is a, is a listing of all the classes and their values over the course of the last five years. I just included 2024 today and the, and the tax rates that we pay for each of those classes. And if you look at the first, the first category here, we have is residential tax rate. That's for the average single family house that we have. That's not the average residential property, it's the average single family residential property, currently valued at 918,140. If you look at that, that category D there, you see that 2019 to 2024, the values overall have increased 56.69%. And if you look at the tax percentage that has changed over that period of time, every year that has gone up two and a half, 2.36, 3.43 from the year before to a total now, if you go to the, the first gray line is a one factor of one, the blue is a factor of 1.03. We've had, we've had an increase in the, the amount of taxes that people pay of anywhere from two and a half to five and a half percent, even five point, well, five and a half percent is the, is the top. So that's an average change each year, rising 191, 180, 267, 389, and 469 at the 1.03 rate. That's every year that, from the year before, that's how much more people are paying. You go over to, then you get into the commercial rate here and you have, I got to make sure I've got the right thing here when we, yeah, average commercial. This is the average commercial value based on the amount on, in, in the total CIP that is commercial divided by the number of parcels. So each individual commercial parcel is going to, is going to be different, but as a class, we've seen their assessed value go up every year, 4.3 to, one year went up to 8.4% and then this last year it's gone up 5.3% since last year. The race, the rate of taxes though has gone down. We've seen that the amount of taxes as a percentage of, of taxes has gone from 1.39% in 2019 from the year before to this year, it's 3.28% less than last year. And every year since 2000 and I got to, I'm not really good with spreadsheets, 2022, it's consistently gone down and this year it's going, it's going down 3.28%. So the average property based on that is going to be paying $405 less than it paid last year. Get into industrial, the same kind of thing. You, you have a ever increasing, there's, there's no, there's no year when, when the actual property value has gone down. The assessments have gone up every year and, excuse me, the overall tax rate that the businesses are paying is going down. So when we talk about a tax shift that if we wanted to even out the amount, the percentages that each class pays so that they're paying roughly the same percentage increase per year, shift to 1.11 would give you roughly that, that change. We'd have a 4.38% change so that industrial properties would pay an extra $626 more than they paid last year. If you, the commercial would pay 4.23% more than it was or an extra $524 than it paid last year and the residential, single family house would pay 4.79% or an extra $405 over what it paid last year. And the point of this is that I, if we continue on the, on the path we're going and residential rates continue to drive upwards, the ratio of CIP is going to continue to drive downwards. We're going ahead to a theoretical zero. I mean, that's, that's not going to happen obviously, but we will get to a point where residential is so significantly higher. I mean, it's already 92% versus 8% on the CIP. It's not that, it's not that we've lost that tremendous amount of value, it's just that the ratio has changed so that impact is going onto, onto the residents. And after a campaign, when I heard nothing from anybody but concern over the cost of living here and the cost to residents of, of even being able to afford their houses, we've now shifted to the cost to the, to the, to the businesses. I believe that's a real cost. I am sympathetic, I'm empathetic as someone who runs his own business to every cost that comes across the, the board here. But I fail to see the, the idea that, that a business paying an extra $600 a year in taxes after having had three years of reductions in taxes is, is justification for keeping what I think is kind of a, an insignificant 1.03 change. I would like to see us take a policy where we are keeping the percentage change roughly the same for each class every year so that every year, everybody pays 5%. Every year, everybody pays 4% more than they paid the year before. Or, and I, and I did, I did posit this out for, as a, as a thought of sticking with a 90-10 split, that would have required a shift of 1.21 and I think even, I can agree that that would be too much to bear in one year. But we do need to, we do need to find a way to blend back towards that 90-10 split. And I think the, the fair way is that every, everybody pays roughly the same percentage more in taxes per year as every other class and you're going to have an evening out of that impact on each individual class. Residence is still going to pay more, believe it or not, but, but I think it, I think it's more fair or fairer to even out that percentage so that, that when you have this differential between the residential and the CIP, they becoming so extreme that you mitigate that to some extent by modifying that rate a little bit. And that's, that's my argument. So I'll leave it up to you and, and I'm happy to discuss my numbers if you want to discuss them.
On the amendment, we'd like to, we should go and roll call, I guess, in fairness. So we will start with Council Majota on the amendment.
Yes. It's just a lot.
It's just a lot to take in within, you know, your presentation, I will, if it's possible, I would like to hear from the Assessor's Office as to say, based on this and with the information you have for the administration.
Assessor's Office, do you have a, do you have a, a quick way to tell us what the change would be for a five hundred thousand dollar property with this new number? Is that something that you can plug in without a lot of trouble? Just so we can kind of visualize it on the chart on page ten?
I'm just bringing Tim up here because he reviewed that initial spreadsheet that, um, Council Grow developed, which is similar to this, I think you added a little bit to it.
Yeah, the, the numbers were accurate with the part that we went over.
You're talking the microphone, Tim, thank you.
Yeah.
Just the, the numbers when we checked them over were accurate. Um, they were all based on figures that came out of the, uh, out of the packet over the years. Uh, it's just a question of how you want to interpret those numbers and what your sort of political goals are in terms of what you feel the right thing to do is with the rate. Everything, if, if you try and boil it down to each individual property, even if you get the class increases to average out, you're still gonna have fluctuations within each side. Commercial, industrial, different properties within there move at different rates, residential moves at different rates. So you really can't do anything that's gonna legislate an individual's, uh, impact. But if you look at it as a class of a whole, then you can, if, if your goal is to even out the percentage increase, then changing the rate might do it, and you'd have to readjust that each year because everything is good, same things going back and forth, changing on each side depending on where the market goes. You'll have different results each year.
Is that clear, your question, Counselor? Do you have any further, um, discussion or questions?
I guess no, with, based on this number then, for the small businesses, it looks like it would be an increase of five hundred and twenty four roughly a year on taxes.
Can I answer that, just because it addresses the question of the.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
So the numbers that you, when you look at that, you says, you see average industrial, average commercial, average, uh, for, um, residential property. That is the number of parcels divided by the value, uh, that we have on these, on the, on page five. So not every property is worth one point three eight million dollars as an industrial property. So as, as Tim's getting to, individual properties are going to, to fluctuate depending on their, their, their overall value. You know, variant, uh, applied materials is going to be worth a lot more than, you know, one single downtown business, but so the, the ratio, that the amount that will increase to each one is going to be different. But the, the overall, the overall average, as I pointed out, is, is, I was kind of surprised to see how much it's gone down. You know, the, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep just deliberating, but that, 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 that all depends on the individual property.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, can I have you, I'm just drawing a blank, I have, I have a question.
Steve?
Steve, yes, with this increase.
What do you, thank you.
How do you think this will impact the small businesses, um, or even the Chamber of Congress?
Um, objectively speaking, obviously, is, as we pointed out, now we're even talking about double to triple the increases that we were talking about earlier. Uh, so objectively, it's now we're, we're obviously magnifying those impacts significantly. So now we're real, talking real money for real businesses and subjectively, quite honestly, if you want my opinion, it doesn't send a great message to say, hey, we're here, we support you locally, but, uh, we're gonna add, add more money to the, to your bottom line, uh, more taxes. So I think it, it does send a, uh, quite a mixed message or a negative message to our business community who's looking for support right now.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is, uh, Counsel Memard on the amendment.
On the amendment. Uh, I, I applaud, uh, Counselor Grow on his analysis of these numbers. I think it'd be helpful in, in, in a larger picture to have a longer historical look back. Uh, when I did this analysis, when I was like digging into this and looking at other communities around the state, the ones that really had a, 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 attractive residential tax rate were the ones that had large industry based within their, but their boundaries. Uh, for example, Plymouth, what does Plymouth have that we don't have?
Rock?
A nuclear power plant. And that subsidizes the tax rate in the community of Plymouth. Uh, we're very fortunate to have the Applied Material and Gortons and the, and the hospital, what's left of the Addison Gilbert Hospital. But I, I, I do think that it's, we want, I got, I said it before, we don't want to become a bedroom community. The problem with your numbers is that we're comparing a class of property that includes twelve thousand eight hundred properties to a class of properties that includes seven hundred and fifty properties. And that's the disparate view, that, that, that somehow we're making the assumption that that one class should, should share a percentage of the overall burden of operating the City of Gloucester. I would much prefer it if we had fifteen thousand businesses and, you know, twelve thousand residences or the other way around, but we are a bedroom community and, and we need more jobs locally based if we're to sustain a lot of the characteristics of the community that we like, so I will not be supporting the amendment.
I'm Counsel Nolan on the amendment.
I have no questions.
Also, O'Neil on the amendment.
O'Hara's next.
All right. Um, Counsel O'Hara.
Certainly, um, could I ask, um, Steve Buckley a question?
Sure, come on up, Steve.
There's chairs right there.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Steve, um, to Counselor Grow's point, um, why, why aren't we attracting more businesses, or why are businesses leaving Gloucester?
A, a matter of just basic operational costs, uh, attracting labor. As I had mentioned earlier, jumping through the hoops, uh, prior to the pandemic to get, uh, to get labor, to, to keep, retain labor. I know there's, there's many factors, but it really comes down to just, to me, simple economics. So, um, being able to attract those, uh, attract labor, it, it, it is additional expense and, uh, what goes into that, so, um, just keeping the doors open right now is a priority for businesses.
So, so the, the minuscule increase in their property taxes will, will affect their business operations? Do you feel, Steve?
Well, absolutely, and, and as Counsel Manard, uh, pointed out, in, in terms of the, um, what we're talking about is seven hundred and fifty two, I believe, uh, parcels versus over twelve thousand parcels, so they're doing their part, and I pointed out earlier, they're also contributing millions of dollars in tax revenue that they're generating in, in options taxes and, um, I could go on, but that they're, they're contributing in other ways and not draining the system as Counsel Worthy, uh, pointed out in other ways. I know, no one, um, benefits from all the services, but they are contributing to our, can, our community. They're contributing to the conveniences of, um, what we have to offer, so, um, locally. Um, not driving, uh, a half hour to pick up something at the store or just that, I could go on and on, but, um, you know, just in terms of, uh, what they, the value added to the community.
Thank you very much, Steve. I have no questions at this point, yes, thank you.
On the amendment, uh, Counsel O'Neil.
Thank you, um, Counsel Grow, can you keep sliding that over to the left so I can see the?
Which one do you want to see?
Um, slide the other way, please. I want to see, yeah, right there, stop, thank you. So, um, one of your arguments was um, that we should increase commercial and industrial taxes because they've just got three years in a row of tax breaks. When the tax breaks they got was fourteen thirty two point seventy three. And so if, if in fiscal twenty four they pay sixteen ninety three thirty nine, their taxes will go up, well, sixteen ninety.
That's, that's the wrong line, that's, that's, uh, that's at a one point two one shift, you want to be looking at the blue line? That's one point oh three.
Okay, so the two seventy four ninety, what year is that? These are different years, right?
So, everything, every, going, yeah, again, friends don't let friends do spreadsheets. Everything in the white is up to twenty three.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty four, the first line, the first gray line is one point zero, that's no shift.
Right.
Two thousand twenty four, two, the, the blue line is one point oh three, which is the proposed shift. And the two top ones are two permutations that I worked on for different reasons.
All right, so.
I'll go back to this here for you.
Thank you. Okay. So the seven fifty one eighty seven is at the one point oh three, correct?
I'm sorry, which, which line are you looking at?
Under average dollar change. There's five. Under the average dollar change. There's five twenty.
Which column? Five twenty four?
Yeah, this is, starts with five twenty four, sixteen ninety three, four oh five.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the dollar.
Seven fifty one eighty seven is what?
Yes.
Is what?
So, so the two seventy four is, is the amount of taxes they paid less than the year before with two thousand twenty one. So they paid as a class seven hundred and fifty one dollars less per property than they paid the prior year.
Right.
And if, and that, that's, that's what, I'm sorry, I take that back, that's not correct. Seven fifty one would, would, would be the number that they would be paying less if it was at a one point oh this year. They would be, if we, if we stick, if we stick with the one point oh three has been projected, the average commercial property will pay four hundred and, basically four hundred and six dollars less than they did the year before.
Okay.
Industrials will pay approximately four hundred and fifty dollars less than they did the year before.
And your version of one point one one, they'll pay sixteen ninety three thirty nine?
No, 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 take, jump up, it's, they would be paying, the one point one one would be the five hundred and twenty four.
Okay.
And the six twenty six eighty five would be the change over the year before.
You clear, Counsel O'Neil?
Hmm. The six twenty six eighty five.
Yes.
That's at one point one one, correct?
That's correct, and that's for the average industrial.
And the four forty nine sixty four is one point oh three.
That's correct, ignore the one in between.
Okay.
We're not discussing that.
If they got a tax break on four hundred and fifty dollars last year, this year they have to pay six hundred and thirty. The difference between a negative four fifty, so that's, they're really paying four fifty plus six twenty six, right?
They're paying six hundred and twenty six dollars more than they did last year, but that four forty nine is four hundred and forty nine dollars less than they paid the year before.
Previous year, okay. All right. But to my calculations, the average way back on, um, row S, as in SAM, um, the four oh five ninety six, seven fifty one eighty seven, and two seventy four ninety equals fourteen thirty two seventy three, that over a span of three years. Now, because the blue line is what?
The blue line is the one point oh three number, you want to, you want to, you want to, yeah, yeah.
Skip that one, okay. So they say two seventy four and seven fifty one, what's the seven fifty one year? What year is that, the gray line?
That's at a one point oh.
Okay, so they haven't, okay. So two seventy four ninety is what they paid last year, or what they saved last year?
Over the year before.
Okay.
Everything is relative to the year before.
Okay. All right, I, I, I'm not gonna be supporting this, but thank you very much, Jason.
Anyways.
Thank you, Counsel O'Neil, Counsel Worthy on the amendment.
On the amendment, thank you, I won't be supporting amendment, I'd like to say why. Like a question the Assessor's Office, if the council didn't vote or couldn't come to a vote, what were the tax factor? We're doing a lot of comparisons to the prior year, but what is the tax factor at the moment for next year, before we do a shift?
You have to vote a tax factor each and every year, so at the start of the year, anything is on the table. Factor of one, or anything less than that is going to be the shift to the CIP class. If you don't vote a factor, then we will not be able to complete the recap and set a tax rate for the year.
So if we had a tie vote for months on a tax factor, what would happen? Just you couldn't send tax bills out, or?
Tax bills would not go out timely if you're talking about an extended period.
Okay, did we give a tax break to businesses last year? I keep hearing that, but I haven't heard that in our community.
That, that comment in this conversation, I think it's just because of the negative. And I understand the presentation by Counselor Grow. He's demonstrating basically where commercial industrial is not rising at the same rate as residential, that on the average value for that class, they're actually paying slightly less from one year to the next um, because they're seeing a lower increase than the residential class as a whole.
Back to the testimony, um, so we come in and the mayor has recommended a one point oh three tax rate. And, uh, uh, above the one point zero zero. Our Budget and Finest Committee recommends, agrees and recommends one point oh three. The business community literally says, we're okay with you taxing us more than you should otherwise. And then we have one counselor who proposes, I think, if my math is correct, an increase of a hundred and sixty percent more than what the mayor had recommended. That volatility is scary to the business, no, the one point one is three times higher, right, than one point oh three. It's more than three times higher, that's a hundred and fifty percent, plus a little more. Correct. Anyway, um, that volatility, if I'm a, a Applied Materials, I'm sticking with Gloucesters, they had a good workforce here, but at some point, I don't want to know, I want to know from year to year what my taxes are gonna be. If I'm the next Applied Materials looking to come to Gloucester, I'm gonna weigh these things, not just the numbers, but the message that the city council is gonna say to the small population of seven hundred and fifty two, we're gonna shift some of the burden of the twelve thousand onto you. It's sort of the opposite affair, right, in my opinion. Um, I'm not gonna support it, and I hope that we at least look at the one point oh three.
I am not gonna support the amendment, but I thought it was a good exercise to go through, and I appreciate you taking the time to share this. I'm gonna stick with the recommendations of our two of the, the key people in our community that is, has a close pulse on what the businesses are feeling and also the value that we have on keeping these businesses here in Gloucester. I mean, in my ward, um, ward four, we lost two of our favorite businesses in the world, Captain Hooks and, um, the Willow Rest, and it, it kills us, everybody in this community is so sad. We have to drive fifteen minutes now if we live out in Lanesville or Bayview to, to, to after the Cove Cafe closes at two to get any type of, of fast food, and it's really, it's really sad for us. So I just don't want to put any more burden, and, um, I, I will be supporting, um, so I won't be supporting this amendment. Um, next is Grow.
Um, I respect all, everybody's opinion, and again, I, 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 I can understand it, and that, that, that is all the morgue of a conundrum why we're sticking with this sort of arbitrary random one point oh three that we, we seem to stick with for, for years, and I've yet to hear the justification for staying there. I will remind everybody that, you know, the numbers are the numbers, e- e- even, even with the shift that I, I, I propose, industrial properties, commercial properties will be paying less on average than they did five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago. Every year they're paying less, they will, they will pay less with our shift at one point oh three than they, they have paid any time in the last five years, probably longer than that, actually. And that with my shift, we bring it back to roughly nineteen, two thousand and nineteen levels. We're bringing it, and that would bring it back to an average level that rep, rep businesses were paying in two thousand and nineteen. You know, I, I, I know how the, the, I can, I can feel the wind blowing, I know, I know which way this is going. But let's, let's look at the numbers, especially next year, let's take a look at the numbers and see how it's really impacting everybody a- across the board, because the, when you talk about not wanting to become a bedroom community, you're, you're creating, you're gonna create a situation where we're just gonna be taxing mostly residents completely. That's, and, and the, and the, and the industrial and commercial rates are gonna continue to, to go downwards and downwards unless we make an adjustment. If that's okay with the council, then that's the way. If that's okay with the council, then that's the way it's going to go. But that's that's the trajectory we're on, residents are going to be continuing to pay more, commercial industrial is going to continue paying less. And that's that's what this message is, and if that's fine, that's fine, I mean, I'm I'm, you know, I'm one of nine.
Um, so we want to do more discussion on the amendment, Counselor Memard.
I I think, like, you know, I again, I appreciate this discussion, I think it's very enlightening, it's a great discussion, and thank you, Counsel Gross, Crowe. Um, goodness knows what Counsel Gross would have to say about this here if he were getting out of the hospital for his knee. Uh, but but the thing that I think you're missing here is you're talking about commercial industrial properties paying less proportionally.
They do.
That's because their property is less proportionally. The 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 value of their property, the market value and the assessed value of their property is not soaring like our oceanfront homes are. Our our the assessment that the assessor's office uses is based on market value and property assessments. So if I go to sell that property, that in commercial industrial property, I can't, I'm not going to see a twenty thirty forty percent increase over what I paid for it four years ago. It's not there, but if you own a house, for better or for worse, if you you may be on a fixed income, but the value of your house, if you choose to take advantage of our opportunity to have a accessory dwelling unit so you can stay in age and place or have a second unit in your house and to to cover the costs of your of your home. But the value of your house has gone up twenty thirty forty percent, so what you know, it's gone from five hundred thousand dollars on average to now eight or nine hundred thousand dollars on average. That's, you know, that's the fact also.
Okay, um.
I I would, I would, I I appreciate that argument, it's not a bad argument. But what we're also ignoring in that argument is that the ability to pay for residents has not gone up that same percentage. Salaries have not kept pace with inflation, the ability, you know, the the fixed costs of our water rates have gone up. Those those all impact, I mean, every every impact you talk about hitting a resident or a commercial business is hitting residents even more so, frankly, you know. If you want to let me finish, if you want me to let me finish my argument, we're having a discussion.
Continue.
So I don't get to call a point of order, that's it.
What is the procedural point that you're making?
Point is Counsel Gross spoke first on amendment, and then he spoke last the amendment, and he's speaking a third time on the amendment in response to our counselor's comments, I I feel like there's three times the ti- time.
I'll wait.
First presentation was nine minutes long, whenever else you get two minutes, so I I don't think it's really fair for a point of a procedural.
Okay, so let's let's go back. Whose turn is it to speak?
Scott's.
I I think Counsel Gross has Grow has the floor.
No, I'm 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 happy to really relinquish it, and and I'll I'll pick it up on my turn.
Okay, so um who has not spoken on the amendment? So, but we're not on the roll call yet, we're still in discussion.
We're discussing in roll call order. I just responded.
Okay, so back to Scott, so after Scott is known.
I have nothing at this time.
O'Hara, Counsel O'Hara, sorry, getting too informal.
Nothing at this time as well, thank you.
Counsel O'Neill.
Most set, most set.
Counsel Worthy on the amendment.
On the amendment, um just lastly on this, you talk about water rates impacting residents the same as they affect businesses or potentially more, and you're saying it to the man who literally you probably uses the most water or had to use the most water to sustain his business. Those water rates hurt businesses too, so I don't think that we can sit here and say we can discriminate on one class or another, and they say we're being less discriminatory because it impacts them, this is seven hundred and fifty two property owners, you you're asking them to subsidize twelve thousand property owners. If that doesn't say bullying, I don't know what does, twelve thousand people were saying, and they get to vote.
Counsel, we this this isn't bullying, I don't I don't, so I I'm going to call a point of order on the bullying, I don't think that that's.
Swore, right, so just, okay.
I apologize for saying, but I called it what it is.
I didn't hear that, so I'm glad.
Twelve thousand people, twelve property owners, they get to vote for us, right? The business owners don't get a second vote. Right, so we're here saying, okay, we're we have the authority to let's not use the word discriminate, we have the sorry, the authority to shift taxes to another class of people, and they don't have the same even representation that they have, so I I feel like it is discrimination, and I don't know why we should do more of it, I think we should do less of it, if any at all, so that's why I will not support the one point one, I feel like we um have that sense across the board, I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
No, we're not done with the round.
No, we're moving the question, motion on the table, move the question.
There are two of us that haven't had the the.
Yeah, but motion to move the question is a vote of the council to end discussion, which we've done many times, so put a motion on the table, move the discussion.
Okay, um motion to move the discussion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, a roll call vote.
So you haven't spoke yet, and Counsel Grow, so if I vote yes, you are two are unable to speak.
That is correct, because because we because Counsel Worthy wants us to end the end the discussion on the amendment, and that's that's parliamentary acceptable provision.
Could we provide a time limit if on the the two remaining people? Two minutes?
I think I think we need.
We have to vote.
No, no.
Okay, so, alright, so on moving the que- the question, um roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
No.
Uh, Counsel Memard.
No.
Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy, yes. Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Grow.
No.
Um, so the motion fails two in favor to move the question and six opposed. So now we're back to Gilman, because I haven't spoken, I have nothing to say. In addition, I already said what I needed to say, and then finally, it's Counsel Grow.
Fine, thank you, and I'll keep it brief, again, getting back to what I was saying before we stopped. The costs that are rising, the the benefit to having your property increases, the 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 value goes up, yes, you can realize that value. You can realize that value by selling your house and moving out of town. That is not a solution, I think, that we're trying to tell people, hey, if you want to take the value of your house, fine, but you got to bugger off to Beverly or Danvers or wherever else like that. I get it, every business, every resident is going to bear costs, and some of those costs are going to be disproportionate in any particular situation. I get it, my my point is, is that I think that we should be looking at a percentage based increase, not necessarily just a dollar based increase, and if we're not going to do that, then why are we doing the one point oh three? You you talk about, I have councils are suggesting that we're discriminating against businesses, and yet they're supporting the very discrimination that they are they're they're against. So if if you're if you're if you're committed to your ideals, then then make an amendment to go to one point oh. That's that's not, that's that would be the end of the discrimination discussion. I don't think, frankly, that's the healthiest thing for the residents of this community, and frankly, any any resident who lives in Gloucester is is going to is going to businesses, if they have more money in their pockets, they're spending it on local businesses, so that money does come back into the community. And I know for a fact, I spent my money here, if I have a if I have a reduction, even nominal in my in my property taxes, that's going to be going to local businesses, and twelve hundred and seventy local businesses, local residents spending their money in seven hundred local commercial entities is probably going to make up for that few hundred dollars that they've been charged every year.
Okay, I think we're finished with our discussion on the amendment, the main motion, so we're going to do a roll call vote right now.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Okay.
Uh, Counsel Majota.
I do appreciate Counsel's grow's work on this, it seems like it was a lot, especially if he excelled, but I will not, my answer is no.
Uh, Counsel Memard.
No.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worthy.
No.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Grow.
Sure, why not?
Um, the motion fails. Two, two in favor, six opposed, one absent, so now we are back to the main motion.
Well, one point.
In the main motion, just to be perfectly clear, um is to recommend the city council adopt a residential tax classification factor of point nine nine seven three zero zero that equates to a CIP shift of one point oh three for fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, we already moved and seconded, so we're back to the main motion. So is there um discussion on the main motion? Um, let's go in.
I'd like the assessor's office to come back up and.
Yeah, we already did a discussion, and then we did a motion to. Oh, we did, we finished the dis- we've we've finished it, he came, went left, thank you, Counsel Worthy. Um, so I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Um, so let's do it, uh Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Grow.
No.
Yeses have it. Five in favor. Oh, Scott, did I not call on you? Yeah. So the motion passes, five in favor, three opposed, one absent. That's it. We needed five. To adjourn.
Motion to reconsider.
Alright, motion to reconsider, if someone would like to do that.
Second.
Um, motion was made by.
Counsel Memard.
Me. Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Nolan. On the reconsideration, Counsel Majota.
No.
Counsel Memard.
No.
Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worthy.
No.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Grow.
No.
The motion fails, a zero in favor, eight opposed, um one absent. And um this concludes our meeting.
I'd like to make a quick quick uh statement, based on our code of conduct, I did in fact have a slip of the tongue uh in the heat of the moment, I do apologize for that. Take it easy over there, Scott. Oh, I do apologize for that, um sometimes you just have to.
That's what the code of conduct is about, so thank you, Counsel Grow, and I wanted to thank the assessor's office um very much, uh once again, for a job well done. Uh Jill, thank you for being here till the end, and to both Steve and Ruth, thank you, and counselors, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, a roll call vote. Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yep.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Um, the meeting is adjourned, eight in favor of adjourning and zero opposed, one absent, good night, everybody, thank you.